Special Board of Alderman Meeting to order on February 9th at 2021 at 6:45 PM. I will, I have to read this whole thing, right? Okay. The Special Board of Alderman Meeting is being held Tuesday, February 9th at 6:45 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Luvering and Alderman Cleve will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America, and to the republic and one nation, under God. Oh my God. And justice for all. So sorry.
Laurie, you're muted.
I read half of it already. Come on. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 892-3145-4969. The passcode is 946-427. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the rights to no law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone.
Alderman Cleve.
I am home alone. I can hear the proceedings.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm alone.
Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I'm by myself and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
Present alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Law.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harry Gathright. Alderman Willshire.
I'm here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 12 in attendance.
Thank you.
I just showed up too.
Alderman Lopez. Thank you.
Here, I can see everybody. I'm alone.
Excellent. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Administrative Services.
Oh, well, thank you, Madam President. I want to introduce to you, of course, Director Kim Kleiner, Director of Administrative Services. And we wanted to report to you tonight regarding progress that has been made in various areas of administrative services during the pandemic, particularly in the areas of assessing, where we have introduced Rick Vincent, who's come up to speed very quickly, and we're very happy to have him with the city. And with IT, a lot of projects have been done with IT. Nick Mizevich has worked very hard to accomplish these projects, and you will hear from Ms. Kleiner the details of the projects that have been accomplished. And with that, I just want to thank everybody involved. And with that, I will give you Ms. Kleiner.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. If it's acceptable, I would like to share my screen for our presentation.
You are all set.
So as Mayor Danta stated, tonight, I would like to report to the board a little bit about the many departments within the division. We've had the opportunity to speak to you a few times now about the improvements within the Assessing Department, which we're very proud of. Rick Vincent has joined the department, and they are settling well into their new space and getting ready for what we expect to be a limited opening next week by appointment only. So tonight, while we focus a little bit on the many other departments, we'd like to talk about the accomplishments of many of the very dedicated employees this year. So as you know, the Administrative Services Division consists of many departments. Assessing, GIS, HR, which includes HR benefits and payroll, IT, purchasing, risk management, the Arlington Street Community Center, and our grant writer. Together, we provide support day in and day out to all divisions within the City of Nashville. And as you can see here, it's a long list. We also provide support to the community through services at the Community Center, information on the city website, and programming on the government TV Channel 16, Access Nashua, Channel 96, and ATV Channel 99. We'd like to focus this evening on a few of the projects undertaken this past year. Working with the mayor's office and financial services, last budget season, we developed a new set of budget narratives, which you saw in the fiscal '21 budget. We worked with the mayor and financial services on the budget and budget preparation. We were joined by Kelly Parkinson, our new purchasing manager, who has updated all of our finance committee forums. She's working on a purchasing manual update in vendor listing, which many of the directors have asked for over the past few years. We've contracted with Shred It for City Hall shredding to get rid of some benefit and other forms which are sensitive in nature. We implemented a paperless bid record management system. We're really trying to cut down on our paper within the city and take advantage of our technology. We are working with DocuWare, as you know, on the scanning of property record cards. So we've actually had our first introduction to the system, and we hope to have that complete within the next couple of months. We are also working on a new contract management system, a way to move contracts throughout the city divisions that have to weigh in and sign off on contracts, and an easier way to update them to the city website for public viewing. We instituted way back last year bi-weekly administrative services division meetings. And the reason we did this was we wanted to take advantage of the various expertise within our divisions so that we can solve complex problems and develop new ideas. We have a lot of employees within the Administrative Services Division that have very specific expertise, and we have found that this leads to very good collaboration and sometimes things that you wouldn't necessarily think of once you have a shared approach. We developed the GIS Steering Committee. This was a committee that is formed by DPW, Economic Development, Community Development, Assessing, IT, so that we can develop a more collaborative approach to how we use GIS throughout the city and make sure that all of our divisions are having their needs met. Right now, Nick Mizevich is working with Esri, our provider, to upgrade all of our software. And after that, we have a new viewer that will be released. The viewer's been worked on by Pam Andruskovich and GIS, working with CDM Smith. As you know, we've been working on the citywide revaluation, which is going well. You can find updates on the city website. And recently, we started with a committee from the division is working on updating all of our city policies and developing a process to ensure distribution to all city employees. We know that this issue was raised, at least within Assessing, a while back, and we want to make sure citywide that our employees have access to the best information that we can provide. Back in 2020, Pamela Davies joined as our grant writer. Pamela has been very busy. This is a shared position within the National School District. She jumped right in. She established relationships with all of our leadership, both at the schools and across the city. She created a method for searching grants, utilizing different grant databases, developed a grant calendar, and has been busy building grant applications for all of our divisions. You can see here a list of some of the grants that she has been successful in receiving. Twenty-five applications were submitted. Twelve grants to date. Almost 142,000 brought in for the National School District, almost 1.3 million for the City of Nashua. And then she worked with the United Way on getting a grant for regional kindergarten readiness. So it's a total of 1.8 million, and that's certainly a lot of hard work for one individual. Looking at the building projects that we have accomplished and are still underway within the city. So as you know, we issued you a report on the Court Street Theater. So you might have read about the fire suppression system and the alarm panel upgrades. We completed the automatic chamber renovation, which hopefully you'll be back in and get to use. We also updated the conference room 208. This includes painting, a total revamp of the room, as well as installation of audio and video capabilities so that we may now broadcast from that room. That's something that we were looking to do with outbringing in television cameras, having another room within City Hall for our various boards that meet. We constructed the temporary space in the City Hall auditorium, which is where our motor vehicles department is now housed. And then we started the City Hall renovations, which includes motor vehicles, assessing, tax, and the city clerk. As you know, that project is to comply with CDC social distancing guidelines, and that is still underway. And as I just said, Assessing is the first. They have moved back into their space and are now unpacking and getting ready for a limited opening. We also painted the lower level of City Hall and updated the employee lunchroom. Here you can see the temporary space in the city auditorium for motor vehicles, if you haven't had the pleasure going up to register your car. We also have the new motor vehicle area on the first floor that's still currently under development. But as you can see here, these partitions that you see along the way, each one of those windows will be a separated space so that when residents go up to the window to be serviced, they will be socially distanced and have privacy. One thing that we didn't have with the previous counter system. This lower picture is the entrance to the rotunda. I have to say, yes, one doorway was probably one of the most complex issues with this renovation. We actually had to have a marble expert come in from Boston. We wanted to make sure that we preserved the historic nature of City Hall. So they had to cut the existing marble. They widened the door, which used to be a single door, and then they used that marble to reconstruct the framing around the door. And there's one centerpiece there that is still being constructed, and we hope to have in place within the next couple of weeks. It certainly was a process to see. Down below, this is the garden level, as we like to call it at City Hall. You'll see this, the first picture of the prior lower level is where we used to see when we came down to the bottom of the stairs. To the right is the new customer service area, which is being finished up. It just has some counters to be installed. This is what we call using an innovative approach to deal with a considerable space constraints that we're in Assessing. So Assessing, when at full staff, has nine employees and the GIS department. Looking at social distancing, that number of employees and housing a customer service area within the existing space did not work. So we needed to find a way where we could take advantage of this so-called dead space at the bottom of the stairs, which was once used as an entrance to a vault that is no longer being accessed from this area. We believe that this is going to provide both our residents and our employees ample room to comfortably do their business. The bottom picture is a picture of the new conference room. This provides Assessing with a room to meet with residents. As you know, we reported over a year ago that for privacy, they would take residents out in the hallway, and they accessed a table within the hallway. Well, we can do better. Here, they'll get to meet with residents in a comfortable and a secure location with privacy to discuss any business that our residents may have. Healthcare and labor is always an issue within the city, and we've been working strongly in this area. So we had the creation of the CBA Strategy Team, which includes all of school employee groups, as well as school, police, and fire. This is to develop an informed and uniform approach to collective bargaining. And we have had four meetings of the group. And I think the shared approach is definitely sharing some new ideas that many of us may not have thought of, as well as understanding the differences and the difficulties that the different labor groups may face. We worked on the healthcare redesign, which will reduce the increase of healthcare costs in the city. It was introduced to the unaffiliated employees and adopted so far by four bargaining units. The Administrative Services Division led the group for the UAW Professional and Clerical Collective Bargaining Contract, together with many of our city directors and our legal department, and that was adopted by the board not too long ago. We've increased our participation in the High Deductible Health Plan. So you can see, for '23 and 2018, up to 750 this past open enrollment in 2020. We supported our city clerk with the processing of absentee balance by hiring 25 temporary city clerk employees and 225 election workers. I have to say that our HR department, specifically Nancy Trask, worked very hard on this, as well as making sure that all of our new employees this year had orientations, which was very difficult to do in a COVID atmosphere. We completed an RFP and obtained a vendor for the dependent audit, which will begin later this month. We hired a new purchasing manager, and as we've said, a new chief assessor. Technology, there's been many projects. We are lucky in the city to have a wonderful technology team. They work very hard to make sure that we have access to the best technology and to make sure that all of our systems are updated, as well as secure. So the Assessing software, as you all know, was upgraded to AP5, and I will say, without issues. We have had a successful website redesign earlier last spring. They migrated the telestaff, which is the employee system for the police department. We had an upgrade to our camera servers, which service our City Hall buildings. They created a new cemetery application, a clerk work software for the city clerk, a solid waste billing system for DPW. They worked on the relocation of all the computers for public health, motor vehicles, tax, assessing, so that we could perform the renovations. They've been working on Civic Gov with the city clerk going live last October, now working with environmental health. They worked with the GIS department on the planning for the Esri upgrade, and Mr. Mizevich is currently working with Esri on the update of the servers. And they upgraded our Cronos timekeeping system. One of the things that we were hoping to cover tonight was the various endeavors that the division had to perform under COVID-19. We've heard a lot about COVID-19. We cannot say enough about Director Katz and the EOC. We, as a division, a few of us were speaking the other day, and we're saying we've learned a lot during COVID-19, starting way back to the shutdown last March. And it seems hard to believe it's been almost a year. But with a very limited notice that everyone had, we were able to shut down City Hall and secure the building. We worked on building signage and then worked with city departments and divisions on who needed access to what buildings and when. We led and operated the supply unit for the EOC, and that consisted of providing all of our divisions personal protective equipment and sanitation supplies. This included emergency personnel. We had to reach out and procure the supplies, track all of the costs. We did ordering and distribution to nonprofits and local city businesses. We converted the employee break room to a supply unit room, where we had inventory control and reporting. And thank you to Janet Graziano from Financial Services for assisting with that inventory control. As you may know, during this time, there were a lot of vendors, a lot of emails, a lot of people that reached out to peddle, for lack of another word, different supplies. All of these vendors and products had to be well researched. We had to make sure that we were living by city guidelines when we were purchasing these products, and we had to make sure that they met the guidelines provided by the state and the CDC. At this time, we had just lost the current city purchasing manager. And I have to say, I have to give a shout out to Amy Gerard in our purchasing department. She stepped up and led the way, placing all these orders. And with the help of risk management and the administrative assistant here in admin, we worked this out. We never went without any supplies within the city. You can see here a limited list of what was sourced and ordered. And we also worked with some community groups to get fabric for face masks, and they provided us with face masks when was needed. Here's a few pictures of the COVID-19 supply room at its fullest. And as you can see, everything from gloves and masks were there. Divisions would order from us, and we would arrange pickup on the City Hall loading dock. It was very serious to make sure that all of our employees were well taken care of and had protective equipment during a very difficult time. Technology was a large item within the COVID-19 pandemic because we needed to make sure that city services were maintained. So as you can see on this slide, over 4,000 help desk tickets were answered by technology since March 23rd of last year. This is everything from service requests to divisions requesting This is everything from service requests to divisions requesting different software or different hardware. We had 108 laptops that needed to be deployed. And when those are deployed, they need to be purchased, brought into the city, loaded with city software and security systems. We transferred 125 phones to what we call soft phones by Jabber. We deployed printers and webcams, monitors and remote access throughout the city. Rich Barby, our website designer, worked almost daily with the Joint Information Center through the mayor's office to keep our website updated for all of the community. We set up the virtual public meetings via Zoom. And we also CTV worked with the mayor's.
Director Kleiner, you're unmuted.
Oh, I apologize. We also during COVID-19 had to research and implement the coronavirus federal policies, which included timekeeping and payroll policies, as well as the COVID-19 leave policies, which the Board of Alderman adopted. We administered over 200 of these coronavirus act and employee FMLA leaves. We counseled managers on COVID-related issues and questions. We worked with all divisions on quarantine. And we utilized a hybrid approach of both in-person and virtual meetings to hire and have employee orientations throughout the pandemic. We hired 85 employees and 60 DPW and cemetery seasonal employees during this time. And I'd like to recognize our HR department that worked very hard. They were very innovative in meeting employees, meeting potential employees in areas even outside of City Hall to meet their needs. Our payroll department has never wavered. And they have put tireless hours into making sure that all of our city employees had no interruption to their pay or their benefits during this time. And most of the time had to be within the city building to get this done. We also had an annual open enrollment, which was transitioned to virtual meetings and an online benefits selections process. And then we worked on the safety team with the EOC and Director Kates. We helped provide citywide building evaluations, recommendations for engineering, administrative and PPE changes to those buildings. We worked in the assisting and planning of the COVID-19 testing sites and the implementation of protective barriers across the city. If you've been in City Hall, you will notice that everyone that enters City Hall, all employees, all contractors will go to the risk department when they enter the building. This is because we have a daily health screening and temperature check on all employees. This includes seven questions, which are recommended by the state, as well as temperature checking. It also provides us being able to track employees. Should there be an outbreak and should we have to conduct contact tracing? We assisted motor vehicles with scheduling and appointments. And we worked with the EOC on a citywide reconstitution plan, which include the planning and procurement of supplies and technologies that our divisions would need to remain moving forward during COVID and after. Pam Andruskavich, our GIS support, worked with the EOC, providing maps and data. This was used not only for our EOC briefings that were held daily, but also for providing the public information via the website. We worked with economic development and coordinated the moving of the public health building to the landmark building. And as you know, the public health building is under construction. And several of us sit on the committee with Director Cummings on that project. We, our building department, worked with the city clerk with setup of elections and temporary registration spaces. As you know, the city clerk's office had a lot of work and scheduling and moving to different locations. And we also provide setting up of PPE and working with them on recommendations for safety of temporary employees. During COVID-19, one of the areas that was probably most impacted by not having in-person capabilities is our Arlington Street Community Center. Director Megan Karen has done an outstanding job in making sure that the community center stayed relevant and provided services to Crown Hill and many others during this time. You may have heard of the kits that they have offered the community. Everything from STEM kits to virtual painting. They had a New Year's Eve activity for children and holiday craft gifts. They did this past December, still get to give out the annual Christmas trees. It was just a little bit of a different approach with a drive-up only. We did purchase a Zoom Room mobile kit for the center. That allows the center to provide many of their classes virtually. And you can see a list of programs there, everything from dance, dance to adult yoga is provided. And these are all regular times and people can join in via Zoom. And it really, if you haven't had a chance to see one of these, it is a different experience than a Zoom meeting such as this. I would encourage you to take a look at one of her offerings. The, one of the probably largest accomplishments, both before COVID and now was their pre-kindergarten group. And they wanted to keep that going. They had Riviera students that worked with them to set up a virtual classroom. This has worked out very well with families picking up their monthly kits at the beginning of the month. They've served 32 kids and 60% of them will be attending a Title I school for kindergarten this next year. So one of the things that we looked at after the recreation of the Administrative Services Division was really bringing all of these departments to collaborate and to work on issues and policies and procedures and things with a lens that allowed everyone to participate because everyone had their special areas of expertise. We developed some goals for fiscal '22. And we want to make sure that we are providing all of our divisions and our employees with the best that the city can offer. So this is just a short list of those goals. Of course, we want to ensure quality services. We always want to do that cost effectively. We want to analyze our existing processes, increase our efficiency and our productivity. We want to enable an outstanding work environment, build a high-performing organization. One of the ways that we'd like to do this is through workforce and leadership development. A number of us have had opportunities to take these type of programs. And we'd want to make sure that they are made accessible to all employees. We want to build and sustain robust partnerships throughout the city. We want to build a plan for the physical preservation of our assets. And this is an area that Ross Dugas and Risk Management has been out preparing what you saw for the Court Street Theater, the Condition Report. He's been doing that Condition Report for every city building. And we hope to put that together and look at a long-term approach to make sure that all of our city buildings and our city assets are taken care of. We also want to plan for the, sorry, we want to use a strategic framework of guiding principles. So we've been looking at the different departments and how we function and how we can create one framework that defines how we communicate and how we address shared processes and priorities. The group has worked extremely hard this past year, as has all of the city's divisions. We're very fortunate to have some very dedicated and probably one of the best teams that I've ever seen. And we just wanted to touch on some of the things that we've worked on this past year. And we thank the board for allowing us the time to do so.
Thank you, Director Kleiner. That was very informative. You've been doing really a lot of good things. So thank you for the presentation this evening. Does anyone have a question before we wrap up this meeting?
I have a question.
Alderman Lopez.
Director Kleiner, with all the renovations that happened in City Hall on all the different floors, did you guys manage to get that one light fixture that doesn't match in the city auditorium?
No, I'm not sure. I'm sure, I'm not sure I know which fixture you're talking about, but if you'll show me.
It's been like that for like 10 years. I'm getting used to it.
I'll take a look.
Thanks.
Alderman Wiltshire, just a quick question. What is EOC?
Emergency. Sorry. Emergency Operations Center.
Oh, thanks.
Anyone else? See, no one? Thank you very much, Director Kleiner. We appreciate you bringing all this information to us this evening. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the February 9, 2021, special meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You are 15 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:31 PM. Start our next meeting in just two minutes, please. On Tuesday, February 9, 2021, at 7:32 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering. And Alderwoman Kelly will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President and Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 892-3145-4969. And the passcode is 946427. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city.